Good evening, everyone, and it's so nice to see all of you here tonight. As I give you an update tonight, I asked that you would hold all your questions until the end, and I asked that you would please mute your cell phones during this time. And I have to say, I've seen a couple of board members, I think, that's on the call. I want to thank the board members for being at this meeting tonight. But tonight, I want to give you an update on where we are with our programs, with our membership finances and fundraising. Our membership numbers continues to increase. So excited about that. I'm sure Jessica is going to talk a little bit more about that when she talks about her operational update. But as of today, we are nearly ninety-five percent toward our girl goal. And listen to this, one hundred and twenty-six percent of our adult membership goal. So that is great, and we, our membership year doesn't end until September the thirtieth. So we are doing outstanding with that. And as far as our financial update, I promise to keep you all up to date on our finances. And I want to tell you that we are well over the GS USA required months of reserve. But I want you also to know that our finance committee continues to meet monthly to solidify our finances to ensure the health of this council. And as of our last board approved financials, we are continuing to make progress to the end of the year better than we ended it last year. A more detailed presentation of our finances will be given to you at our next All-Town Meeting in the fall. Some of you may have heard about this, and some of you may not have heard about this. But our, as you all know, our Fair Labor Standards Act will take effect nationwide this year. So please know that we will continue to provide our volunteers top service and our girls of this council top service. And our service to you will continue to be, as it always been, our top priority as we continue to ensure that our employees have good work-life balance. I want to talk a little bit about our annual meeting because we had a great annual meeting. Our annual meeting was held on Saturday, April the sixth, and it was a big success. And we said goodbye to our former board chair, and we installed a new board chair. We installed officers, members at large, as they took the Girl Scout oath. And I am so very excited about the work of the Board of Directors under the leadership of our new board chair, Linda Manley. I don't know if Linda's here tonight, but I am excited about the work of this board. We got a lot of, speaking of the volunteer summit, we got a lot of positive feedback about the summit. And I personally was happy to be able to visit with some of you on Friday night around the campfire at Camp Torquay. And speaking of Camp Torquay, let me talk a little bit about some of the improvements. Some of you have been out there. I've been watching the Facebook and some of the things that you're saying, the positive things. Keep up the positive energy. It's great. But as far as camp improvements, I think I gave you an update the last time of Butterfly Garden and many things that we're doing out there. But we are in the process of putting up four new cabins and a pavilion by Tuckaway and La Seta. Now, that's the north end of the camp. We are putting a new PA system and emergency response alert system up, which we really need that when the storms and stuff is coming at this time of the year. So that's happening. Not just the first set of trails is being completed, but a second set of paid trails are being completed. That is made necessary by Madison County. So in talking about camp, I want to talk a little bit about the Girl Scout Experience Fund. The Girl Scout Experience Committee is still busy approving your request. And as we have seen, we have seen more requests this year than we did last year. We saw more requests last year than we did the year before. And I want to encourage every one of you to continue to apply for this funding. The fund can be used for many opportunities, not just camp, but many opportunities. And if you have any questions about the Girl Scout Experience Fund, please do not hesitate to take a look at the website for more, a more detailed information that you will get. As far as important dates, our national convention is coming up, you guys, and it's going to be in Washington, DC in two thousand and twenty-six. Well, that's just a short time from now, a couple of years from now, now about a year and a half. So be thinking about that. If you want to go with your girls, be thinking about that. It's a great experience for girls as well as volunteers. You definitely will see democracy at its best. Our deadline is coming up for our overnight camps. And we're happy to say that, and Jessica, I'm sure is going to talk a little bit more about this too, that our camps are getting filled. So our overnight camp at Camp Torquay, the deadline for the girls to register is tonight. So make sure that we are making sure that every girl who wants to go to camp have registered before the night the clock strikes twelve o'clock. Let's make sure that we have those girls registered. And our day camps have already started. And what a wonderful time the girls are having doing these day camps. And I have to tell you about a partnership that we, I just signed a memorandum of understanding with. We are very excited about this new partnership at Greenville University in Bond County. Now, I say that because I said we want to get out of the metro area and do things, more things in other areas of our council. So we have signed a memorandum of understanding, and Jessica's going to give you more exciting program opportunities with this partnership. But what I'm most excited about, what I'm most excited about is the scholarship program that will grant our high school seniors to, that meet the requirements, a scholarship valued at, listen to this, twenty thousand dollars with an additional three thousand annually for a minimum of twenty-three thousand dollars. Now, this is exciting news for our council. We had a wonderful meeting with the president of the college, and myself and the president of the college, we are both very excited about the opportunity, the opportunities to advance more female leaders. Some of our events, you heard me talk a little bit about Bond County. I want to now go a little bit to the southern area of our council. There will be a fundraising event in July in Marion with the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to be working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce in Marion. And we are excited about this event because, again, it is in the southern area of our council. We are also planning our annual United We Lead Gala. It's going to be September the sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the Lewis and Clark Community College in the Leclerc Room in Edwardsville. This, with so exciting, so many exciting things that's happening with our council. And with that exciting news, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica, which she's going to share even more exciting news. Jessica, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thanks, Loretta. Good evening, Girl Scouts and Girl Scout supporters and Girl Scout volunteers. I am Jess Upchurch. For those of us that haven't met, either virtually or in person, and I serve as your council COO. I have the privilege of sharing with you what our everyday-to-day operations, feet-on-the-ground staff have been doing to serve you lately and what you have to look forward to in the future. So one of the things that I want to give you a sneak peek at is that we're really excited about a brand-new resource called Rallyhood that will be available to all of our Girl Scout members, families, and staff this fall. A group of staff have been working behind the scenes for months now to really dig deep and see if this resource is something that we think will benefit all of us and all of you. It's really a resource for our volunteers and our families to really be connected together and with the Girl Scout Council. So Rallyhood, what is it? It's a collaborative platform for organizations like us that have a strong mission and groups. And unlike other Facebook or other social platforms or social media, there's no noise, right? So there's no creepy algorithms. It's set to give you specific information based on what you've looked at, none of that. No ads, and then, of course, no, none of your data sold anywhere else. There's some really great benefits that come to Rallyhood. And again, this is just a sneak peek, so we're not going to get into the deep details. I just kind of want to let you know, like, hear the word Rallyhood. There'll be more training and opportunities to come. What it does provide, though, is it provides private digital spaces that allows you to collaborate with troop members amongst your service unit, even with council staff, just engage and organize all of your things in one space. It will be customized to our brand and the jargon that we use, and it'll be scalable to meet the needs of if we need to communicate on a council level or if you need to communicate on a service unit level, you'll have access to do that, too. And then, of course, it'll provide... Someone saying something? Okay, sorry, I must be getting some feedback here on my laptop. And then also provide some analytics, so you know who's really diving into what information that you're sharing. If you're a service unit manager, you'll be able to see, okay, they're really interested in these kinds of, this kind of information, but maybe not so much this. So looking forward to giving you a bit more deep dive later on. And it's also the best thing I feel about this is it provides something that we don't have yet. So it provides a very user-friendly mobile app right on your cellphone that'll allow you to enable notifications on certain things that you want to stay in the know on and stay up to the date with the latest and greatest communication regarding Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. Now, we will be inviting a group of early adopters from our group of service unit managers that we hope will help give us some insight on what those important factors are that you want to know about up to the minute and to help us engage well with other members and families in this new tech platform. I've shared with Ashley a video that she's going to show. It's really quick, about two minutes, just an example of how another council that, it's actually Girl Scouts of Nations Capital in Washington, DC, they've been using Rallyhood. And I just wanted to kind of give a preview of what this system can be for us and how they use it as a council to communicate to their volunteers. So Ashley, if you have that ready, I'll let you take a look.
Also going to do, in addition to the user-friendly website, we're also going to do something called Rallyhood, since you heard that a little bit earlier. And this is an online community that will let you better interact with each other. The councils, associations, and service units will be able to send reminders and alerts. Volunteers will be able to communicate with each other, even post pictures, selfies. And members can share best practices. With many of our service units active in Rallyhood, we have now launched the Girl Scout Family Rally. In the coming months, we want you to join the conversation.
The national organization is really rolling out a customer engagement initiative. They're really saying, don't think about what's easiest for staff. Think about what the volunteers need and make that your first priority. And they started to tick off the things that they wanted. They wanted volunteer-to-volunteer interaction, and they wanted it to be electronic. They wanted to be able to share best practices. They wanted alerts and reminders in a timely way pushed to them. And finally, they really wanted to be able to opt-in and opt-out based on topics that were of interest to them.
I'm finding Rallyhood to be not only very easy to use and implement, but then all the volunteers seem to be very excited about the ease with which they can implement it.
Some people will wear five different hats. It's nice because, again, on our old system, they, these people were having to go to ten different places because of each position they played. Now, they go into their rally, their dashboard shows, you know, their top five rallies, and they can check them one, two, three, and be done and not have to, you know, remember again, ten different passwords and go to all these different places.
Yeah, I manage the council recognitions panel, which, in our meeting just now, we had all the volunteers receive their recognitions and the high awards. And that panel actually does their reading of the packets and their voting and all that kind of stuff all through Rallyhood.
It's really nice to be back in, kind of seeing things happen at a very grassroots level.
Thank you, Ashley. That was great. So again, I'm going to say it a third time because, by the way, it's National Repeat Day. If you didn't know that, I shared that with Steph this morning. So National Repeat Day, I'm going to say it again. It's a sneak peek. We can't wait to dive deeper with you and share more about how you can be involved and interact with this new thing called Rallyhood. Look for it to be opened up council-wide in October or November this fall. Again, we'll give you information on how to get involved in the coming months. So next, I'd like to chat with you about the cookie program that just ended. I know many of you are going, whoo, so glad that that busy season has passed. And I just want to give a huge thanks, and thanks doesn't even seem like a big enough word, to all who participated in that cookie program this year. It was a huge year all the way around, just to be able to say we can have cookies available till the very end of the program. That was huge for us. So whether you're a leader or a troop cookie manager or a service unit cookie manager or a cupboard manager, thank you. Your support to this program is, that's unlike any other for youth in our world, really, is appreciated beyond words. And thank you also for providing feedback through the surveys that our product program team distributed at the end of the program, that we've already gotten some really great suggestions that the team's looking forward to implementing for next year and already hammering out that cookie program calendar to be released soon. And our customer care team, a quick update or news to know for you is that if you interact with customer care through email, you will start to see a link at the bottom of their return emails. And if you have a few moments, really like thirty seconds or so, to click that link, it's a survey, a very short survey, an opportunity for you to help us provide world-class experience that we're trying to get to. And we can only do that with your feedback. Tell us how we can serve you better. We don't know until you tell us. And that's a really great way to click a quick link, give us a little bit of feedback so that we can take that into consideration as we continue to train and coach and mentor customer care staff. And then, of course, you know, throughout all of staff at the council office. So thank you ahead of time for your feedback there, too. As Loretta talked about our partnerships a little bit earlier, I just want to echo the incredible experience that Greenville University provided for us when we went to tour. And so, as you saw in the photos that were shared, we got to tour their equestrian facility. They have a beautiful riding arena that they're inviting us to. The director of the equestrian program did a short demonstration for us in the arena, just talking about the way horsemanship and relating to horses can make a huge impact, not only on people, all people, but specifically youth. And they're able to make connections and build confidence like never before. And we have engaged in conversations to help bring an overnight camp, a week-long overnight camp next year that we're planning in tandem with Greenville University to open up to our girls. So in the summer, we'll have a, we're working to have that week-long horse over camp, over camp, overnight camp for girls to come and enjoy. So look for those registrations when they come open. We'll let you know because those are going to fill up so fast. We talked with them a lot also about the different ways we could partner with the many degree programs they have there over the summer. So we toured their audio engineering facility. We have a badge for that. We were also able to learn more about their astronomy education program and how we can partner with them to utilize their resources there on campus to go explore the world of astronomy. We're looking at one-day programs. We're looking at week-long programs. I can't wait to dive in more. And also, of course, expanding on our college preparedness, our college knowledge, as it's been known to be called here the last few years, to really expand on that and providing girls extraordinarily experiences in college dormitories while they're attending these overnight programs or the week-long horse camp I talked to you about. They're inviting us to actually use their facilities. So while it's camp, because it's an overnight experience, these girls are going to be able to stay on campus in the dorms, have that experience. And then they have shuttles that will shuttle them back and forth from the equestrian area to the college campus. And we can't wait to see what other activities we can just weave in there as well. So very excited about that partnership. The scholarship is a wonderful opportunity as well. So let's talk about this summer. Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois' Fun in the Sun is just getting started. As Loretta said, we have some day camps already open that have already taken place. We also have four full weeks of overnight camp that's taking place at Camp Torquay. We also have the week happening at Camp Andesak. As she said, I'm going to repeat, registration for those overnight camps for Camp Torquay expires tonight. So eleven fifty-nine PM is the last moment you can get a registration in. A few of us were out at Camp Torquay this morning with our new camp staff that are on property this week training. Great group of young ladies, I will say, including our camp healthcare manager that will be working with our girls who may need some health needs throughout their stay. We have Animal Adventurers Camp, International Explorers Camp, the STEM Camp that's many have grown to love and adore every year, also has an overnight option, which has got a lot of girls coming to. And then the Pop Star Era Camp. There's something for every girl this summer, is what I want to share with you. And then, in addition to that, in partnership with the wonderful volunteers in our council, over seven hundred and thirty girls, and I know that number is going to continue to climb as we get to the deadline tonight. So over seven hundred and thirty girls will be experiencing a Girl Scout outdoor activity through Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois this summer, and that is an incredible number to share. Another piece of Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois' Fun in the Sun are our water park events. And those were an incentive from our membership team for anyone, anyone who has renewed their Girl Scout membership for NY twenty-five or a new member coming in for NY twenty-five. Those water park events, there's one at the Collinsville Aquatic Center and then one at the Mount Vernon Aquatic Zoo. Those are up for registration as of today, so members can go out and make their reservations before those fill up. There's plenty of space. I think there's like well over like four hundred and fifty, I guess, is the maximum for Mount Vernon and Collinsville is even more than that. So looking forward to celebrating the new membership year registration with you there. We have over twenty-eight hundred girls already renewed for our new membership year that starts in October. That's twelve percent up over where we were last year. So looking forward to that growth. And then over two thousand three hundred adults that have already renewed for next year. So we know that people are excited to choose Girl Scouting today and in the future. We can't wait to celebrate with you as we round out next year. That's all I have for you tonight, so I'll hand things back over to Loretta. Thanks for giving me the space and time to share what's happening in the areas where we serve you directly.
Thank you, Jessica. I mean, how exciting is that? When she was talking about our camp professionals, we have a group of professionals out there this year. They are going to be just amazing, fun, some of which we came up in Girl Scouting themselves. So the girls are sure to have a wonderful time at camp this summer. So make sure you get them all registered. And when we were talking, when she was talking about the college, Greenville University, they have an arena that you can go and watch girls in the arena. I think Ashley showed you some pictures. I'm standing in the arena with a horse. This is going to be just a very, very exciting year for our girls when it comes to camp and all the other opportunities that we're looking at. At this time, I want to give this space to you for any questions that you may have. If you have any question, I'll take them at this time. Well, if we don't have any questions, I just want to close by saying how excited I am about this program. And volunteers, I don't need to remind you of how important your jobs are when it comes to this council. Our girls need us, all of us, to attempt new things and to challenge ourselves to be more creative for them. So I want to thank you for shaping our efforts as we continue to build these girls of courage, confidence, and character. The accomplishments with the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois have been so energizing, and we will continue to focus on building the leaders for this future and for our future. Thank you again. Thank you, thank you for your contribution to this program. I really appreciate your efforts. I think I have a hand up, and who is that?
It's Betsy down in Anna. What, could you repeat again what you said was coming to Marion?
It's going to be a fundraising event at the Chamber of Commerce. We are working in partnership with them.
But this is a fundraiser for GSSI?
Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. That is correct.
Loretta, can I speak on that a little bit, please?
Yes, Elizabeth, one of our board members is going to speak on that event a little bit.
Hi, thank you for asking, Betsy. I don't have all of the details, and so Ashley or Loretta can correct me if I'm wrong. But the event is going to be a business after hours in conjunction with the Marion Chamber of Commerce. And it's going to be held at Mandala Gardens, which is on State Street in Marion. It's by Lincoln School, if you're familiar with Marion at all. It is from, I think, about five to seven PM, and it is open to anyone. It's going to be free of charge. So it's a fundraiser, but we're going to solicit some business sponsors so you can come and just enjoy some Girl Scout cookies and some different beverages. We're going to kind of pair some cookies with some different kinds of drinks, cocktails, wines, but also non-alcoholic versions as well. So it is going to be an eighteen and up event, but you can also explore the gardens. It's really pretty out there. If you've never been before, they've got like a maze and a lake, and it's just going to be a really nice event. And one of my goals as a board member from the southern area was to get some events down in our area. So if you know of anyone that you think would, a business that might want to partner with us and sponsor this event, we are looking for sponsors of up to ten thousand dollars to offset the expenses and also just as a fundraiser for Girl Scouts in general. And then, if you know of any organizations that might want to have Loretta speak in this area, in our southern area, then please contact Ashley about that as well because she's doing a little speaking tour, especially in June and early July as well. So we'd like everybody to come that is especially from our southern area, and we hope to have more events down here as well.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for clarifying that. And Betsy, it's so good to see you as well. Again, as Elizabeth said, one of the things that we want to do in this council is make sure that we're getting out of the metro area and out into the other areas. I talked to you about Bond County. We're looking at Marion. We're looking at other areas as well. We're certainly getting out and getting more partnerships to just expand our brand when it comes to the Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois. Any more questions? Thank you, Betsy.
Let me ask you another thing. So back in the day, because my daughter Elizabeth is just graduated from high school, and she joined Girl Scouts in kindergarten, so she's done her thirteen years. But when she was younger, and I'm talking Daisy Brownie timeframe, you guys used to partner with SIUs, like craft shop, and to where, you know, it might cost five dollars and the girl could go up and earn the... I can't even think of the badge. I can see it in my head. It's the letterboxing, you know, badge or the one where they made the clay bowls that had to get in the kiln. Anyway, so, and I know you weren't here at that time, so you probably don't have the correct answer, but why did it ever stop? Why did, did Jessica stop doing that?
You know what, Betsy, I really, you're right. I can't answer as to why, but I do know that we are building... You know what, Betsy? I really, you're right. I can't answer as to why, but I do know that we are building more colleges and getting out there. And I can speak for Kara. I know she is very interested in doing more programs. Our program director is interested in doing more programs and partnering with um uh more organizations and colleges, colleges especially. So um I I I can't speak for what happened in the past, but I can say moving forward, we are doing absolutely that because when we were talking to the Greenville University, they offered so many things that line up with a lot of the badges that the girls have already. So um moving forward, we we are looking at all of that. Jessica, did you want to comment on that or Kara or any anyone else want to comment on that?
I'll leave space for Kara, too, but I just wanted to comment here to let um Betsy and anyone else know that several members of our program engagement team that develop and um deliver our programs are on the line tonight. So I'm sure they're feverishly taking notes on what you're saying. Um so thanks for sharing that. Again, I'll let Kara say anything she wants to, but I knew that she was on and probably taking close note.
Well, and Kara is probably about to to chime in on this, but um I just wanted to let everyone know to be sure and check out our website because we have our pro preferred program partners, and the Southern Illinois University Craft Shop is listed on there with some program opportunities. And I'm sure Kara's probably exploring some more, so she can elaborate on that further, but they are still a a program partner with ours, with with Girl Scouts of Southern Illinois.
Yeah. And then that may be why they've kind of fallen under because again, if if the program continuity kind of stopped in terms of leadership change, then I'm I love getting that feedback that it's something that the girls loved and that we should bring back. But they are on our partner page, so you can definitely reach out. The pricing is there. They are still doing what they've done. We just haven't, as a program team, um created a formal like opportunity for that. Now, in February, I'm looking at, you know, we had had a paint and sip um for a fundraising opportunity earlier this year. We're gonna do a junior paint and sip on Galentine's Day, um a juice, a juice and sip, right? And and feature the makers' craft badges. So that's an event I'm working on, getting on the calendar, you know, into the winter uh because those crafting and life skill opportunities are so important for the girls. So um thank you for asking and 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 follow up with me if you've got even more. Um we've got two locations scoped, one in Mount Vernon and one at Torquay. Uh and I'm working on finalizing for the calendar right now, so they're not quite official, but I've got my locations and we just have to get them all up, so. But Mount Vernon will be the the southern location in the community center in town.
Thank you, Kara.
All right. Again, thank you all. Again, uh as I said, I I I don't have to remind you of how important your jobs are. We thank you all so much. And at this time, I know Elizabeth spoke, but I want to give space if any other board members would have anything that they would like to add tonight. Well, if not, uh I thank you very much, and I look forward to having another all-town meeting with you in the fall. Thank you so much and good night.